All right, it's seven o'clock and it looks like we have a quorum. Except Patrick is running away, smart man. So, order. And, uh, first order of business is meetings, the meetings, yes, the minutes from the last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, um. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed, carried unanimously. Very good. Uh, and I don't have a copy of the agenda in front of me. Um, Julie, what's the first item on the agenda?
First item is year end transfers.
There we go. Um, Kim, Barbara, do you want to, uh, address that?
Well, I said, I sent you all an email.
Right.
With all of the reports that Kim had sent to me. And, uh, I'm just trying to bring up my email here, so Kim, why don't you? So that I have it in front of me. Um, and just wait a minute, so Julie, when I click on my inbox for my emails, it's not going to show up on the screen, right?
It will because I'm going to give you permission.
Oh, no, no, I sent it to you also so that you could bring it up and then maybe I can.
Oh, yeah, let me grab and go into my email, I can do that, um.
I only have 10,000 emails.
Oh, that is true. Let's see, um, okay, I've got it there. Okay, so I have the memo that I sent to Barbara that she very kindly forwarded to you all. Dated September 10th, and I did have two recommendations for closing out projects in the Capital Projects Fund. There are two, uh, it was the truck six that we replaced and the Public Works conveyor. Was a balanced tolling of the two, four thousand eight oh nine sixteen. And I recommended that those be closed out and transferred to the undesigned, there you go. And, uh, and then, uh, transfer to the Town Aid Road Fund of, uh, sixty thousand dollars. And I did include what I sent to Barbara and that she forwarded to you all was a copy of the Public Works budget. Quickly, it has a bottom line balance of sixty one thousand four thirty eight thirty six. And, um, I do believe that there won't be anything more posted to it. Um, and as we did last year, I think we're just gonna, I would recommend that you make this transfer because we need to capture as much money as we can and, and put it aside in the Town Aid Road Fund for a lot of these projects that are coming down the road. Um, and one of the, uh, let's see. I think that's it for those, um. The, the Town Aid Road Fund transfer will be subjected to the town meeting approval, so if you all decide to make this transfer tonight, um, it will have to go to a town meeting as well.
Okay.
The, the, the closeouts for the reserve for capital do not need a town meeting. Uh, but the transfer to the Town Aid Road Fund will, given the dollar amount.
So, what do you all think?
I think it's totally sensible.
Absolutely, I looked it over, I mean, obviously, there's a lot more spent on asphalt and there's some other things that we knew, but this is all just to close out the books and obviously, I think we have a lot more ahead of us, uh, with the next year than we do this year, so.
Right.
Yeah, if you, if you would like, I did, I, I know Andy wanted, um, a little bit of a report on expenses and revenue, and I can go over that very quickly, I did make some notes to myself which would make, um, the budget in in the revenue reports, uh, make some sense and will, uh, give you a better understanding of the, of the road transfer. Uh, we can do that now, or we can?
We can.
You want me, you want me to just go ahead and do that?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. Okay, so. So this, this, this fiscal year that has just ended, June 30th, is like no other fiscal year we've ever had in the history of the town. We still are operating under a public health emergency and that continues, it continues into the new fiscal year. And as the governor, um, extended the emergency, it's now, uh, going to February 9th of 2021. So we'll still be capturing some costs associated with COVID-19 because of that. And, um, so, so there've been obstacles thrown at the budget. If you look at the bottom line of the budget report and the revenue report, we're showing on the budget, three hundred forty six thousand dollars and change that has not been spent. And we're showing, uh, sixty six thousand dollars and change that we overcollected, if you want to, for lack of a better phrase, on the revenue side. So, um, so I'm projecting a net change and probably which is good, given all that's happened this year. There will, and I'm going with three fifty because there will be some, uh, audit, um, adjustments made on the tax side that, uh, that the auditor comes in and makes. So, and I don't know exactly what those numbers are yet, so, so I'm, I'm expecting three hundred fifty thousand to be added to the fund balance.
Kim, would you, Kim?
Yes.
Would you just, I mean, I can see it, I, I, I reviewed it, but just give us an overview of where the three fifty, the biggest chunks of where the three fifty is coming from.
Right, I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna get to that.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, I'm, I'm glad you're asking, so if you look at your budget, we have, you know, a lot of departments that were underspent because we had buildings that were closed, for at least a couple of months now, the, the library doesn't really, the library doesn't really affect this, you know, their expenses don't, aren't affected here necessarily, but the senior center, the town hall, are, you know, given, given what's gone on in the last quarter. And then some, so, so you've got more money, less spent in legal fees. The senior center's got a good balance left, recreation. The police budget, the state police, you know, they have a lot of money left in there because of, um, hours that were not used, and for, for people who have left and this and that. Uh, the muni agent, um, her budget is, uh, underspent. Uh, the elderly transportation budget, which is the senior bus, that's way underspent. So when you add all of these things up, tho- those are the big contributors to, um, to why we have such a large, uh, balance left.
And if I could just, um, you know, as far as the senior center, that's been closed since March.
Right.
The, the two people that are in there, um, were, are, are working, they were working remote, but then, um, they do go in there now, however, it is still closed. I do have permission from, um, the Health Department, they wanted to have their soups on, the, put on by the friends, the soups on to go. And they figured out a plan on how that can be done with, um, very few people, like one in the kitchen cooking, maybe two runners. People have to pick it up outside because it is a fundraiser for the friends and the friends' money, uh, benefits the senior center. But also, we stopped all the transportation, um, we had to lay off the two bus drivers. And, um, I don't know when that's gonna start up again, cut the hours of the, um, municipal agent. And, um, we're looking at possibly adding some things that maybe she can come back to her, she was only working, um, three days. And not full three days, not eight hour days. So, because she's, she's hurting on the unemployment, I guess. When it's, when it's, your hours are cut versus your whole job being cut, you really get hammered with practically nothing. They, they subtract two thirds of what you made. So she comes away with like twelve dollars, I mean, it's, it is ridiculous.
Oh, that's wrong.
So, um, you know, those aren't big ticket items, those two salaries, and so, I'm going to have a meeting with the Health Director. Uh, but it does not look good for opening the senior center again, just yet, I mean, I don't see it opening, uh, before January, if at all. But there are people that would like to get the bus running again and only have medical transports, but we have to fix, we, you know, the bus, we have to put plastic, and we would only be taking one person at a time. But it's still, you have to retrofit the bus, it has to be cleaned. And I don't know if we want the liability, people are getting to their doctor's appointments now with friends. And that's just, it's, that's, it's life, I don't know what to tell people.
And it's all about protecting the driver, putting a, like Barbara's saying, putting a plastic shield, a barrier between he and the passengers, it's, it's a lot.
Wouldn't it be better to just identify kind of a volunteer corps where people are really disciplined and would volunteer to drive people to their appointments and, you know, wear masks and sanitizers and face shields and all that? Or does that expose us to liability too?
Yeah, I don't want, you know what, that's already happening on their own. And so, uh, rather just keep it that way, instead of the town organizing. You know, names have got, got out before, and, uh, so people, that, that's how they're getting there. Or, you know, what they should be doing also is, you know, calling on their family and, uh,
Yeah.
It's, you know, their family needs to step up, and so some of them have, finally, because they were told, you're gonna have to come, I, I, you know, I can't help it if you don't live near here, but she's not our responsibility a hundred percent during something like this, so people have stepped up. They really, really have, so it's good. And, um, like even some of the programs that were going on there, the, some of the seniors are like, well, can't we just meet, you know, at their knitting group? And I said, you know what, you guys on your your own, it is not sanctioned by the town, you can go and sit outside at the pavilion, the, the tables are out there, they're all, but I, that's on your own, you can all call each other up, you're, you're all friends, and go and do whatever you want. But I am not, the town is not sponsoring any of these programs.
And, and, and wouldn't, couldn't you do a knitting class by Zoom? Do they have that cap, capability?
Well, they have, they do have some, uh, um, exercise classes going on right now, the book club is going on like that. Um, there are supposed to be some speakers, but there are still seniors that are not using the computer, so.
Right.
These groups, different groups would like to get together, and I said, well, you're, you're friends, it doesn't have to be organized by the town, and I really can't do that just yet. So, anyway.
Right.
It's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what does that translate to in terms of a mil rate?
That is about, it's about a mil.
It's about what I was thinking.
It sounds like one mil, yeah.
I think, I think you can, it's approximately a mil, I can give you the exact figure, but, um.
Something to keep in mind going forward.
Sure, you're right.
Right, so, you know, and there's a lot of little, um, various departments that have a balance left that, that may or may not be significant to COVID or whatever, but, but it kind of all adds up to the bottom line. And as far as the, uh, the most notable, the overages that, that you see here, like on page two, um, even, even on page one, if you look at elections, they're, they're just a little bit over, but they're really, um, they've been asked to do a lot of, uh, you know, shell out money here and there for, to, to comply with all of these executive orders, um, coming forth for the, uh, the primary election and now the November election. Uh, fortunately, and, and that is something that's gonna obviously continue into this fiscal year. But the state has, uh, the Secretary of State's Office has allotted about a half a million dollars in what they call safe polls grants, so the town is getting a little bit of relief expense wise, grant wise, from that. It's about forty five hundred dollars that we'll be getting over the next couple of months, we've already received a little bit of it to offset uh, expenses, unfortunately, nothing to offset this, um, in, you know, in the previous fiscal year. But going forward, um, with the November election coming up, there, there will be some, uh, some offset to the costs in that line. Um, and if you go to page two, as you, as you can see, um, in the town roads and the, in the Public Works Department, you've got some big overages in paved roads. Lot of that, last year, there was some, uh, a lot of patching going on, but we did absorb, uh, two rounds of chip sealing, one last summer in 2019, and then one this spring. And we're kind of, Barbara is kind of at the mercy of the company that does all of our chip sealing, you know, they've got a heavy schedule and we gotta take what we can, date wise, you know, we try not to do two in one year because we don't budget that way. But, um, but we had to do it this way this time. And so, that's where you see the big overages, but to offset that in the Public Works Department, you have a lot less money spent on materials during the winter. Sand and salt, we did have a much warmer winter, so, so there is a balance to it. Even though the numbers look way, way out of whack.
They do, and then, but constantly keeping an eye on that bottom line for that department.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
And we have to do that, but.
Totally.
Especially, you know, it, it, everything's up in the air now also, but, um, we take advantage of getting some work done when we could.
Right, and, and due to the, um, lack of spending, uh, say, with the state police overtime and the hours uh, that were budgeted for the town police, you know, we were able to absorb all of the COVID cost, if you go down further on page two, local emergency preparedness, we have a twenty five thousand dollar overage in that line, and that all has to do with our expenses related to COVID-19. So, so we were able, you know, with, with underspending, able to absorb that without having to go, to go to contingency for it. Let's see, the other, the other budget that is of note here, um, that doesn't show a big overage or underspending, but is, is a big number right now, is the transfer station. Um, and it's only showing a five thousand dollar, um, under, you know, balance left in the budget as of June 30th. But, um, but we have really significant unprecedented numbers of hauling and, and tip fees due to the uptick in residents in town, uh, starting in March through June. And this continues into, uh, into the new fiscal year as well, and as, for example, um, municipal solid waste tip fees and hauling, it's up by twenty tons a month, twenty tons, extra tons of garbage.
Jesus.
And that's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah.
And, um, and then the, uh, the, the phenomenon of, we used to have all these five cent returns that we would collect down there and we'd have a company haul them out. And they'd send us the money that would go into our resident relief fund, well, they were shut down, so we had to then now send all of that out um, as recycling. And we do not pay for recycling per se, but we have to pay for it to be hauled away. And we have gone from probably combined, and, and same thing with the municipal solid waste, we go, we, we usually average between that and recycling about seventeen hauls a month in, 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 on a good day. Now we're up to thirty two, thirty hauls, an average of maybe twenty eight, twenty nine hauls a month. Um, with the uptick of COVID-19, so those are really significant, totally unprecedented numbers, and those are going to continue through, uh, through 2020, through the new fiscal year. You know, our, our.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, this is Paul, I'm, um, forgive me for my ignorance, but, okay, we know that weekenders have now become full timers, right? Presumably, they have stickers and have paid to be able to deposit their rubbish. How do we be, I mean, look, if the entire community was aware of this, um, ish, issue, um, is, is there a way to maybe, you know, find a way to, to, uh, cover this nut, and, you know, would people be willing to pay more for?
No.
No. Okay, all right.
They're getting their taxes, that's where it's gonna have to show up.
I'm a stupid altruist, I, I'm sorry.
You know what, getting fifty dollars out stabbing eyes out.
Well, I know, but we have, one amongst us though has won the prize, right, for getting those dollars out of them.
Yes, yes, we do have a, a winner, um. No, I don't, uh, raising that is, um, I, I would not go over, well.
Why don't we just raise it on New Yorkers?
We also give our volunteers a free permit as a nice thing to do and to say thank you. And that is a large number, that's a large number. So somehow, um, it already is, and, and this is one of the arguments, well, you already have all this in our taxes. Yes and no. Um, so, we can revisit it, but, uh, you know what? Newtown, Kent, all of these, they're like a hundred and fifty dollars a year to get a permit to go into the tran, their transfer stations, so we have it made here, we really do. And the, like you said, the, this is not going away, and if we continue to have the storms that we've had and we lose the power.
And we're going to.
And the power that, outages that have, um, wreaked havoc on people's freezers, et cetera, that whole haul was unbelievable.
Yeah.
People started empty and all their stuff, so it's an unknown, um, but it's, it's there, and I don't see us raising the permit fee, I just don't. Um, it's, we can, absolutely, it's not gonna go over.
I, I know we can, I know we can, but maybe we need to start just communicating to our, our constituents, what's happening, I mean, we, we need to make, maybe notification, the more they might say, oh, okay. Um, just saying, but, um, dear, oh dear.
Well, uh, I know I have written about recycling for one, and unfortunately, like Kim said, you know, when we, we pulled a lot of, um, five cent returnable cans and bottles out of the recycling, so that was less haul because we had someone picking them up and paying us to do that. And that has been shut down and it still is shut down because I've asked Judy to just stay on it and see if we can do it. The unfortunate thing is people have gotten out of the habit of separating, and getting them back to do it is gonna be a real problem.
Barbara, Debbie and I, um, have one side of a garage filled with waiting for the day of acceptance.
And you know what, you're not the only one that has done that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Who knows?
Closed my house at One Davenport last Wednesday. And I'm eighteen forty six, it's not getting any better. I was, I had no idea, I mean, I didn't go to the closing, but when I got the, I got the, the readout, there was almost two thousand dollars that went to the town of Roxbury and about six grand that went to Connecticut. I had no idea there were those kinds of transfer, you know, ownership fees. But I, I, I mean, look, I'm not that sophisticated, I was, I was actually thrilled for Roxbury because that's gonna help, and I gotta believe that there are a lot of sales happening that's gonna affect our budget, am I right?
Yes, and I'm gonna talk about that when I talk about the revenue.
Oh, sorry.
Kim, why don't you keep going?
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, is there a way, I think it'd be very useful to us and to the Board of, the, um, Board of Selectmen to try to get our hands around the economic impact of, you know, we're talking about the transfer station, we're talking on a couple of other things. There's a hu, I would think that there's gonna be, both on the revenue side and on the expense side, some pretty significant impact of what's going on in terms of new people coming in. I, like, for example, I don't know how much of this is gonna increase the tax rolls and, or how much of it is just people moving into existing tax houses. I would like us to ta, take a stab at least of trying to assess the overall economic impact of what's happened.
Are you talking about real estate sales and all?
These houses have, have paid taxes, it's, um, you know, people have sold, so they're just taking over.
Okay, but the ones that are, the ones that are selling, as Paul said, there's additional transfer fees.
Yes.
Um, and I don't know how many of the, I don't know how much the building, um, has increased.
Yep.
And how that means in terms of revenue, and then in terms of cost, I had asked this before, but at some point, it's gonna have an impact on the schools.
Well, it already has, we have seventeen new students at Booth.
Right, but you had said that this year, it, it didn't look like it was gonna affect the, the.
Correct. Correct.
I just think, if I'm alone, you can stop me and I'll drop it, but I just think there is, there, there's, we ought to at least think about how the budget and the budget and the revenue of the town are gonna be affected.
Um, absolutely, like, building, um, has been affected as far as, you know, what John is bringing in, but Kim will get that in her, I'll let her speak to that and.
Yeah, let me just, let me just finish up because, um, I'm, I'm, let me just finish up with what so, so we know, we know the, we know the impact, um, on the budget side, and, and, and things are going to continue, they are continuing into the new fiscal year as far as a transfer station. And now with these two storms, that's a whole another ball of wax, we got, you know, seventy, almost seventy thousand dollars in costs associated with storm cleanup. So, so we know, we know what those are, and then on the revenue side, um, you know, I, I have to start, I, I have to rewrite them, the M D N A for the financials because there's so much that has changed. And so part of that is, is doing some analysis on my part of expense and particularly revenue. And I'm, I'm kind of focusing on revenue because we're seeing these unprecedented numbers. Um, so I'm trying to go back and do an historic, um, go back X amount of years and look at the patterns and see what we can, uh, learn from that going forward. So, um, so it, for, for June 30th, 2020, you know, you could see on the revenue report that we've got clerk fees, a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, um, taken in, exceeded the projection of a hundred thousand, which is mostly, um, ninety thousand dollars in conveyance tax, these property transfers and, uh, other clerk recording fees. So, um, so I did ask the Clerk's Office about, um, property transfers in the last quarter since, since COVID-19. Since since COVID nineteen, so from March first till about August thirty first, we've had. About fifty five property transfers and that that is a huge amount of property being transferred. In a very short period of time, thirty and I think and I believe from March to June, it's thirty four. And this continues now into the new fiscal year. Again, in the new fiscal year, a hundred thousand dollars was projected from the clerk's office. Ninety thousand for conveyance fees, ten thousand for the recording fees. And they're already at close to, they're approaching fifty percent of their projected goal. Um for the year in the first, in the quarter is not even over yet.
Wow.
That so that will tell you, you know, we're we're take, they're taking in significant amount of money. When you talk about your. Property closing, Paul, you know, there's many others. Marger parcels um that are contributing to that. Um same with the building fees. They were over, they uh exceeded their projections by eleven thousand last year. And this continues into. The fiscal year, the current fiscal year. Uh John is already at fifty percent of his projected fees for the whole year. In the same time period as the clerk's fees. I mean, he gave me a huge amount of money this week. And um.
John has worked through the whole, the whole time. I mean, he would, he never went in, signed for inspections, but he said. We can't, you know, hold up this construction. A lot of it is remodeling. And um he's done a great job.
Right.
Well, can I ask, how do we, how do we look at these overages from a budget standpoint? On where we would redeploy this revenue?
I think personally, I don't, I don't think we're at a point yet to even look at that. We have to get through the the winter and see where all of this COVID stuff is. And uh, you know, maybe that's a good thing for January, February, when we're looking at the next year's budget.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right.
But but we're talking about, we're talking about real money here.
But I I think, I think there's gonna be a plateau to some of this. As far as property transfers in building, there's only a finite number that you can do. So so it's gonna level off at some point. It it, I I'm not sure exactly when yet, but. Um it it's it's part of what I'm 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 looking at over a period of time to look at historically what happened. In the last uh say fifteen years with certain pockets of revenue, the clerk fees, the building fees, the things that we're really seeing affected.
Right.
By what's going on right now. And then uh and I'll be very happy to share that with you. Once I finish it and and look at it and 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 see what, you know, try to come to some conclusions, what what these numbers all. Mean.
So Kim.
Yes.
Will that include on the revenue side and the expense side? Because we just talked about there, um you know, as Paul was saying, there are, there are. Related expenses such as what's happening in the transfer station. Looks a little different if the the new revenue is more than paying for that. So can you include expenses on as well as revenue?
Have, I haven't started that part of it yet, but um but I'm trying to uh. Trying to pick out the biggest chunks of expense and revenue that correlate to what's going on now. And um and yes, I'll be very happy to do that.
Thank you.
So then the other, the other things as far as revenue goes, you know, we did have a large uh surplus we received from Region Twelve this year. Last year. Um and and I, I'm just not sure what to expect. I need to talk to the business manager. Um because I'm not sure what the costs, what their COVID costs have been. I know they've gotten some. Uh grants from the state to help with all of that. Um but I'm not sure, quite sure that 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 won't affect tuition. For Agstem and all of that. But um I'm just wondering how that's gonna affect their bottom line. Overall, I I don't have um, I don't have definite. It's hard, it's hard to look into the future right now beyond uh.
Yep.
Ninety days. Things keep changing. And then, and then finally with the taxes. I spoke to uh the tax collector, I I spoke to Kim Pocrifica today. And um and she's still trying to get a report that me, that's meaningful from uh her software. That would would give us some indication of people who have not yet paid their taxes but are not yet delinquent. At but she is gonna be um as October first is gonna be here before we know it in a couple of weeks. She's, she's trying to effort that. And if we have anything to share with you. Before that time, I will, we'll definitely, um Andy, I'm sure she'll send it to you. And uh and and we'll, we'll, we'll get it to you as far as this numbers go.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are there folks that, one, were perfectly capable of paying their taxes on a timely basis? But kind of backed into the ability to defer?
Well, that's a good question. That's what I wanna know. If people are ju- are taking advantage of the deferment period.
I don't think that there is a a lot of them, if if there are.
Right, no. And just as a comparison, from July through September first of two thousand nineteen. Versus July through September first of two thousand twenty, um we've collected overall. We're we're in the hole as far as taxes that were collected between those two periods, about five hundred fifty one thousand dollars. Right now. So so we we collected five point, five point seven million. And in two thousand nineteen this time, and this year it's about five point one six four.
And and you haven't been able to analyze uh. That disparity yet?
No, I have not. I have not. I'm 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 really, that that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for reporting from the tax collector on that. Instead of that, you know, who, who has not paid their taxes yet? That is also not delinquent. So.
Right, and 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 of those numbers, how many of them are kind of chronic in terms of?
Right, I I expect, I expect part of that number are the people who are always. Chronic delinquents on their taxes. But but I don't, but I don't have any sense of of that number, how many people. Taking advantage of the deferment period and are perfectly capable. Of paying, although from what Kim has indicated to me, that that most people who who pay their taxes on time. Have paid their taxes on time, but but there's a obviously a pocket there of people who have not. So and that's what I'm looking for in a report form from her software company and they're. They're really having problems for whatever reason, producing a a reliable report to them.
Okay.
That's Patrick. Um if October first is gonna be here before we know it, so we're gonna know if someone is delin- They have, they don't have a job and they don't have the funds, or is this?
That is part of it.
Right, that definitely is part of it. I'm not sure, at one point, we had a hundred and twenty people on unemployment in Roxbury, Barbara.
Yep.
Well, me, I don't know if that number has gone up or gone down. Um I'm not sure if we can get a number, an updated number on that. Barbara, do you think we can?
You know what? I I didn't even look and um I do know, I do know personally several people that did get jobs. And um but I will, I will get that. I didn't even think about that.
Excuse me, Barbara, is that your grandchild crying in the background?
Not crying.
Well, making noise. Is that your grandchild?
Yes, it is.
Oh, congratulations.
Oh, no, not that one. Not the new one. Thank you, thank you.
Um I just, I just kind of wanted to wrap it up. That's really kind of all I have for you. Um but I did wanna let you know where we stand with FEMA in COVID nineteen. Uh we, we have submitted about twenty nine thousand dollars in costs. There've been, there's been a lot of back and forth with FEMA. And they still have not made a decision yet. Uh there are a lot of other towns waiting. It's been about. Almost uh eight weeks since they got our request, so um. So I I I don't have anything to tell you about that. Um the other thing with COVID is that. Whatever they declare that is ineligible costs, that they're not going to reimburse us for. We do have two other options, and that is the Department of Public Health. And the Coronavirus Relief Fund that is being administered through uh the state O P M. And there's a whole other administrative bureaucratic stuff to go with that. FEMA, so um so I don't have anything to report there. Um we do have the two storms. Uh Storm E C E S and the eight twenty seven storm. I I have a deadline tomorrow to get the eight twenty seven storm, like a pre-assessment damage survey that the state wants. For both the tropical storm and this last storm, so that uh FEMA can decide whether they are going to. Uh declare a disaster so that we can get reimbursement for those two storms. And those two storms.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, those two storms are about, I think I said seventy thousand dollars in cost. Um and we would be getting um seventy five percent of that back. And so um so so we're still a ways away from recouping some of that. I'm pretty sure we'll get a. Declaration for the tropical storm. I'm not so sure. About the eight twenty seven storm, but the thing about the eight twenty seven storm is that our costs are gonna be higher for that storm. Oddly enough, because of the type of um, because of the type of damage and how time consuming it was to clean it up.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we really, I I think clearly we had microbursts and and little tornadoes all over town.
Yeah, it does look, it does look like that. Does anyone have any other questions?
I have a comment.
Yep.
You know, I I sit on a number of other boards, and I just wanna say. How much I respect you, Kim, um for your timeliness and and and. Katie, for sending information to us well in advance of these meetings. There are often times where I'm on a a board call and I've gotten the package, you know, an hour before. So I really, really respect the fact that you respect this entire um committee.
Oh, absolutely.
Kudo.
Yeah, absolutely. I respect each and every one of you and and um. And it 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 just, it has not been easy, I have to say.
We know.
It's uh, it's been a personal and a uh, there's just been a lot going on these last six months and um. I'm just glad, you know, that I can keep it all together and keep it organized and get it to you in a timely fashion, time management.
It helps, it helps a lot, Kim.
It it does really help, so um.
So.
Thank you. I really enjoy working with all of you and and it's a a pleasure to help you, assist you in your decision making.
Oh likewise.
Very good. Um so what shall we do with Kim's hard work? Is there a motion to approve the uh transfers or the closeouts?
So move.
Do they need to be done individually or, uh Julie, do you know that, or can they be done as a group?
Last year, you did them individually.
Okay, let's uh, let's go. There's only three of them, so we could have a motion for each one.
So move.
Which one?
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Which ones are we doing?
Yeah.
We're doing the uh the project closeouts.
Okay, but which, the motion has to be specific to which one we're doing.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Looking at it, I'll uh I'll make a motion for uh number one, reserve for capital to cover. Public Works conveyor for four hundred and fifty dollars and replace truck number six, balance of four thousand three hundred fifty nine sixteen. Both projects are completed. I make that motion.
Second.
So any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. Alright, next one.
Okay, uh also would like to make a motion for the town aid road fund transfer of sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Is there any discussion of that one? Okay, so if we vote on this, this means that it'll go to a town meeting. Um and then it'll be approved or not at the pleasure of the voters. So. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Alright, motion carries. Thank you.
Does the town meeting, I'm not sure why these would be related, but does the town meeting need to happen before the audit?
I don't know. Kim?
Um, I don't, I don't believe so, as long as he, I I think, I think the auditor is satisfied. That that it is uh transferred as of June thirtieth. He takes the minutes. And then um in in, this kind of kicks in and automatic, has to go to a town meeting.
Right.
So um so he sees that and he just assume, he, you know, he he follows up, you know, to make sure the town meeting does occur. And if there was some reason it wasn't going to occur by the time the financials were written and issued. He would, um he would probably have to make a note of it at that point. But usually by the time all is said and done.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all happened.
Okay.
Okay, um what's next on the agenda, Julie?
We have um Selectmen's report.
Okay.
Yep. So um I just wanna start out, just to let you know, um how much work Kim has done. And um Eric, you know, these storms just keep adding to her plate. There are, they are very tedious and the dollars that are spent, hours on equipment, people's hours, et cetera. Have all gotta be documented and they have to be done in a very specific way. She has done an incredible job and then we got hit again with another storm. And um personally, I don't know how she's keeping up with it, but you all need to know that this has taken hours. And hours and hours of her time. And it's been um, and like she said. You know, they keep changing the criteria. It's just um, it's been ridiculous. Or that they tell us we're gonna get this and then, well, maybe not, but but give us all the information anyway and then maybe we'll, we will refund it. So um you know, we have these emergency declarations, et cetera, and who knows where it's gonna end up. But um Kim has done an outstanding job and I want you all to know that. I would, you know.
You know.
Leave it at that for right now.
Well done, Kim, well done.
Uh I'd like to just mention that on Sunday mornings, when she has nothing else to do, she picks up old men and takes them to the hospital.
Very, very active in our ambulance, which is a tremendous benefit to the town. And John, I hope you're feeling well.
I am. I wouldn't be here if she wouldn't pick me up.
Yep, yep.
What happened, John?
Things worked out for you.
Hit myself in the head.
Probably not your favorite activity of the week.
No, it wasn't. Wasn't at all.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Me too.
So the other, the other person um that has done an outstanding job working right alongside me. Is Bernie Meehan as our Emergency Management Director. is Bernie Mean as our Emergency Management Director in these two storms. And it has not been easy because this last storm, uh, well, both storms, Eversource was a total failure. And, um, we are, many, many municipalities in the northwest corner are, are going after Eversource for, for something that, that they have to be told by the legislature of certain things that they have to do. It was, you know, 24/7, um, just arguing with them and then just saying, we're going out on our own. You know, we're a small town, we're at the bottom of the food chain and we got to take matters into our own hands. He is a tremendous resource as far as, you know, connecting with people, et cetera. So I, I just also want to compliment him. And, um, I'm just going to leave that at that right now, but I cannot tell you what a valuable resource he is. He is also, when he's not doing those things, answering ambulance and fire calls as a volunteer. Um, so we're very fortunate to, I am very fortunate to have both of them. Well, we, we couldn't get through all of this, uh, without either one of them. So the other thing, I just want to just jump through a couple of them. Bob Munson, I, I don't know if you, you heard that Bob Munson was in a car accident and, um,
Oh, no.
Yes, he is in Yale at the present time, um,
Oh, no.
Broken bones mostly and, I mean, I'm, that, that's all I'll say about that, but he's holding his own and, um, we're just sending our prayers that he gets, has a speedy recovery.
Oh, God bless him.
Yep, so Bob is on our planning commission still and, um, I just wanted to get that, whoop. Uh, okay, Eversource, again, total failure, um, has, has just totally gone backwards to pre-sandy times. And, um, dealing with these people was, uh, just a nightmare all the way around. I, I don't think I ever had the phone off of my ear, um, just through all these storms, just trying to get through to somebody and then giving up on them totally to where I told them, don't, just don't even call me because we're finding our own resources, which we did. Um, the executive orders, you know, the governor has come out and said that his executive orders are going to go through, um, till February, but really, um, at the, a lot of the executive orders all expire on November 9th. Everything is though up in the air. It's, um, supposed to be having, uh, talks with the legislature, but I don't know, they don't meet. So I don't know how they're going to get that through. But one of the things that, and I'm bringing it up is because of the town meetings and other municipal meetings. Um, what was brought up is that in the very beginning, the governor gave the towns a permission, if you remember, we had our annual meeting through Zoom. And, um, and then it gave the Board of Selectmen the authority to tell the Board of Finance to approve the budget. You know, if they so, if they thought that that was, would work. And we did, and we did it that way and it was all fine. And we had a, we had a really good budget, so we didn't have a lot of people saying, hey, wait a minute. But some other towns did. It was not a, you know, they didn't, they didn't like that, that all of a sudden they're just going to approve the budget without any input. So now they're looking at, um, holding town meetings and other municipal meetings, board meetings, using a hybrid for in-person and, and, and Zoom so that people can, uh, show up. But, but they have to change the number of people who can be in a meeting. And that hasn't come along yet either. So we're talking about having a town meeting to approve these things. I think that probably, I was going to talk with the selectmen about it. We don't usually have a whole lot of people. The most numbers of people that we have are at our annual meeting. And if we need to approve these things, I think we just do a high, you know, broadcasted Zoom meeting. And, um, and go like that with it, if, if you're all okay with it, just go with a virtual meeting. Um,
It's worked okay with the public hearings for wetlands, you know, people get to have their say and so on.
Um, I don't know what- Actually, it's with Donna this morning. It's, you know, a couple of families that have-
Huh. Seems like the recording's going in and out.
Yeah.
Right now. I don't know if it's on Barbara's end or what.
Can you hear me?
No.
You can hear you now.
Okay. I don't know where, where I left, but, um, I, did you hear that I said the COVID cases are now at 17 in Roxbury?
No.
No.
Oh, yes. So, um, four of them have been like two people that are in the same household and, um, the others are, are younger people. You know, this is just adding, 17. We had what, six before, so, and all of those have recovered or were never in the hospital, et cetera. But, um, there's, you know, their ages are younger now. And I can't, you know, obviously for HIPAA, I cannot get any information. I, I don't ask about that. But, um, you know, it could be some sports, it could be, it could be anything. But just letting you know that. There's, um, you can hear that, uh, the people that are getting this, uh, contracting COVID now, most people don't have a whole lot of symptoms. And that seems to be the case with, um, some people, not all of them in our community. Um, I do want you to know that I am in Florida because I did have a new granddaughter, um, born and I'm down here helping this week. And, uh, I have to quarantine for two weeks when I get back. And I, I was hoping they were going to take Florida off the, the COVID list, but so far that hasn't happened. Um, I got tested before I came, I got tested when I got here, I'm going to get tested on Thursday before I go home. And I've been negative and it's going to be very frustrating to have to quarantine. So I hope Florida comes off the list so that I don't have to do that. But I've been working remote and taking care of everything and talking with people, so I just wanted you to know that.
Barbara, if, if it doesn't come off, uh, we love you and we will, we'll bring food to you.
You're on. Oh my gosh.
Barbara, is the 17 inclusive from the beginning or is that current? Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, so two other quick things. Um, you know, we had the back-to-back storms and we were almost finished cleaning up when we got hit with the other storm. And, um, I have to tell you that the town of Southbury called and said, you know, they didn't get hit, hit nearly as bad as we did and they offered their services to us, which Kim also had to take into consideration of in-kind services. And they sent out the first crew here, which, um, very, very appreciative of.
That's amazing.
We're continuing the cleanup because the cleanup keeps growing because all of the damaged trees, there's hangers or they're falling now. After the fact, it just doesn't end.
Yeah, no, the truth is, a lot of trees are falling,
Yep.
you know, a week, two weeks after the incident and it's a mess.
It's a mess and it's dangerous. Because you're not sure where they're coming from. You know, in a storm, you're most likely to stay home, but now you're out driving around. So it is, it's a problem. Um, the Public Works guys are doing a great job trying to keep up with everything. Okay, um,
Yeah, they're just, if I can just interject one thing about the town of Southbury. Um, the Connecticut general statutes allow for a mutual aid of this kind. Usually you hear about it in emergency services. When there's a big structure fire in another town, there's a lot of mutual aid that goes out to all the fire departments. But it stands true for Public Works as well. And they were very, very kind to, uh, reach out to Barbara.
The first-
And they were here for three days, three full days, a full crew with equipment.
Yep.
Um,
Andy, they were on Transylvania.
Yeah, that's, I was driving past and I was like, I don't recognize any of these guys. What's, what's up?
It was very nice of them. Yeah, the first selectman called me and the next day the Public Works called me and, uh, said, absolutely, you know, you can just start by cleaning up our Public Works garage area. It was a nightmare, so.
Barbara, Barbara, I mean, um, I'm hoping it's all non-political, right?
What are you talking about?
No, I'm just saying, their willingness to come and help us has nothing to do with politics, right?
Oh, gosh, no, 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 no. This is all done through Public Works. And we reciprocated to other towns in the past, uh, in a similar fashion, but it's all allowable and done by towns all the time. Um, when the tornado went through Southbury, I can tell you, I forget how many years ago that is, they had 10 towns in there helping them.
That's so wonderful. That's great.
I mean, we went up to Cornwall when they had tornado. So, yeah, no, there's nothing political at all. I'm not even sure how it could be, but, um,
Well, I would like, I would like to suggest that we broadcast this great news.
Yep.
And, and, and make it non-political and just tell everybody that, you know, we all are human beings and we love each other.
Yeah, it's just neighbors being good neighbors, you know.
There you go.
So, um,
So I want to touch on the garbage, um, situation that Kim, you know, already talked about. And it's an issue and it's going to be, it's going to remain an issue going forward. Um, it's, but I want you to know, you know, in our reserve for capital, we put money aside for, you know, containers and, and different things that we may have to, may have to fix or buy. And so we are going to fix the compactor itself because the, the motor and the pump uh, need to be redone. We've repaired them several times. And now it's going to get replaced and we have the money for it. And it's all been approved in our budget, so I don't have to go to a, a town meeting for that. I just want you to know we're fixing this compactor by replacing a part of it. The pusher, whatever you call that.
It's getting a lot of work.
And, uh, but, um, it's time. I mean, Albert keeps saying, well, we can keep going, but no, we got the winter and so we're fixing it. I asked the selectmen about it. Um, what Maple Bay Farm tomorrow, um, our, uh, two other selectmen are going to represent the town. They have put, uh, their farm into a conservation easement. They have other people running it at the moment. Um, Wiantanog and the Department of Agriculture are, are part of that. And it's just, you know, it's really something really special that they wanted to do a big deal for, but with COVID and having people together, they're not. But we will be broadcasting that. It's, and it's tomorrow and Russ and Jim are going for me, so I appreciate that. The last thing is, um, one of the things from the, uh, the state is the payroll tax deferral. You were talking about tax deferrals. And here it was giving people, if I had it right, giving people the option not to, um, I'm sorry, I, I, not to have their payroll taxes taken out until, I can't remember what month. At what time, at, at such time, it would be, you got to pay it all, you know, at 12%. But we're going to give you some relief so that you don't have to pay it right now and you can, um, have some extra money in your paycheck. I think it's a terrible idea and, um, especially, and especially that at, at the end of, and Kim, I can't remember what month it's due. Do you remember?
I, I think the, the, it, it came in two, it came in two spurts, you know, earlier um, in the year, uh, after the COVID started, the, um, the CARES Act allowed for employers, um, to defer their portion of the, so, it's just the social security tax, not the Medicare tax. It's 6.2% to defer it until the end of the year and then it would become payable. Um, and it's like, I don't know, I, I, I don't think it was a good idea. And so, so we just kind of went along as we did. And now the executive order that was signed, uh, by the president allowing for, uh, employees to defer their portion of the social security tax, uh, I believe till the end of the year. And, um,
That's all fine and good, but if they don't pay it, the town's responsible for it.
Right, right. The town, the employer becomes liable for that.
We're not broadcasting that, but, um, it is out there and I don't know of anyone that has come to, uh, has come forward to say, yeah, I want my payroll tax kept in my check.
No, I don't think anybody's here.
It's not coming away with it, it's, it's deferring it and it's building up.
Right.
So.
And the employee has to ask for it. You know, you just can't, you don't have to offer it to them. They, they have to ask for it. And, right, nobody has.
So anyway, I mean, there's just stuff going on, but I really just want you to know how much, I appreciate Kim and during these storms, Bernie and, while, while I'm away, you know, he's trying to keep up with the, the trees. Uh, but I'm, I'm talking with Butch every day and we're on top of it. So, but that's it.
Right. Thanks. Anything else anyone wants to, uh, bring forward?
Um, I'd just like to, once again, thank Kim, her team, Barbara, for amazing.
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah. You're here.
You're welcome. We have a good team, all the way around, all the way around. We have a good team.
Yeah. It ta, it takes a village and it's always a team effort here.
And I believe, I believe that. It takes a village. Thank you, Hillary Clinton. That may piss off a lot of you, but it's true.
It does, it does. It takes everybody to, to make it go. And, uh, you know, I do have to say, you know, I volunteered with Bernie for a long time on the ambulance side and he is unparalleled in his operational knowledge. So, so to have somebody like that, um, helping Barbara, you know, her right hand, uh, especially during all these local emergencies, um, it's really invaluable. You know, he supplies me with a lot of information. Um, and, uh, it really deserves his, uh, kudos, his attaboys here.
Well, I, I, I would like to say that, um, he volunteered as our Emergency Management Director from day one with me. That's over 22 years. And this year I asked the Board of Selectmen to give him a stipend like we do the chiefs of the ambulance and the fire because he's put in that much time and his information is invaluable. And, um, the, the chiefs get a $5,000 bonus, if you will, stipend every year because of all the extra work that they have to do. And, um, I did ask for that for, for Bernie. I thought he, it well deserved. But, um,
He earned it this year.
They, uh, they kept it at, uh, $2,500.
Okay.
He has a, you know, Bernie has a nickname and that is Captain Chaos. And he has an insane ability to operate in times of chaos and it was really chaotic around here during the, uh,
Yep.
Especially the first storm. It was, it was just ridiculous.
Can I just ask, was, was the 5,000 turned down?
Yes.
I, I would-
I'm just mentioning it, but-
I would just say, okay, that's bullshit. Um, I think we need to, um, make a, a motion to approve 5,000.
I think it's up to the selectmen to decide whether or not to spend it. I think it's at their discretion, not ours.
Well, it is, but I think she's looking for support from us.
Well, I'm just, I'm saying I'm leaving it out there. Um, I'm not asking you to make a motion tonight, but I can tell you I will be back with it.
All right, when you're back, please make the ask. We look forward to that.
As I said, I think, uh, if we had had to hire, uh, someone to do what Bernie is-
So my only, my, my only question, oh, sorry, Andy, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's okay, go.
No, I just want to know, when can we all get together for a social distance meeting?
When pigs fly.
We have a, we, we have a really large deck. We could do it here.
I think it has to be in public property, Paul.
Oh, never mind. Oh, sorry. But I missed
No, it doesn't. It's not a meeting. You can meet wherever you'd like.
Yeah.
It's not a meeting.
But we can't talk about official business at all.
Never. Okay.
But I think we could probably avoid that.
We'll figure it out.
Very good. Is there anything else?
Barbara, I just wanted to let you know, John Blaney has been a huge help. He always has been, but I have a couple of nice projects going on in town and he's really been very accommodating. So I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you. And I do know that. And, and also he is his, it's a one-man band. He's his own secretary, you know, after Nancy left, we never replaced her. And I mean, Julie can help him every once in a while, but I don't know that he leans on Julie a whole lot. He takes all
Not at all.
I know. He does all his own work and he is very efficient. And he works the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Yep. So it's good.
Hey, is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Tomo.
Anyone opposed? Then good night. I'll see you all next month.
Hey, you guys stay well.
Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.